All right, call to order Monday, October 3rd. Regular meeting of the Leominster School Committee. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and here the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, and in the visible of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I will read the Leominster School Committee's statement. Committee represents the needs of all Leominster public school, public school students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decisions upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Leominster. And with that, I will open it up for a public comment. Do we have anybody who signed up in person?
No one signed up, but we can, if anybody wants to.
Hello, everyone. Michael Stassen, I live on Main Street. At the previous meeting, we learned that the plan for the athletics fields costs more than is affordable. I was surprised to see that not on the agenda tonight because I think it's critical that the school committee actually weigh in on this. We've heard a lot about accommodating the needs of half a dozen neighbors. I have not heard much about making sure this new plan adequately supports the students of Leominster and their families, who you represent. So I think it's crucial that you have a meeting with the athletic director, look at the costs, and you should be part of the decision about which things to leave out and which things to do. And then ultimately, hopefully, it's a plan that you've approved and not just one that's chosen for you. I know the athletic direct, back when I was on the school committee, the athletic director came to us and gave us a very, an excellent plan, like some of the extra things that I think I heard were cut last time, were really designed to support the maximum number of students. So if they're what goes out, then I think you're left with something that supports the minimum number of students. That's just off the top of my head. I think, you know, it's up to you to take a look at what's there and what the athletic director says and what can be afforded, but I think it's crucial that you guys actually look at this and take, you know, take a position. Obviously, you can't magically make $7 million appear, but it is up to you to figure that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
Peter Higginson, 333 Elm Street. Regarding the discussion to leave the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, I mean, MASC is a member-driven organization, not unlike the Mass Mayor's Association, the Mass Municipal Association, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees that are superintendents, which are mayor and city council, and the superintendent are all members of, respectively. Most of what they deal with is pretty much humdrum business stuff, advocating for funding, advocating for eliminating red tape for their membership equity across districts, things like that. Obviously, they have a couple of things that might be controversial to some people, not unlike the MMA, which also deals with things like policing, cannabis, and sustainable energy, some practical things that they do that we take advantage of pretty often. They offer professional development and networking, which I know a few of our members take advantage of every year. They also offer the orientation that's legally required for new school committee members, which all the new school committee members should have done sometime this year. They also provide assistance with sourcing superintendents when we have to hire a new superintendent, which is something Leominster may need in the next few years. And they also provide draft language for policies that we use annually when we draft, template our own policies to make sure that they're up to date with Mass general law. There is one other district, and only one district, that's not a member of the MASC. It's Dyton, Rehoboth, that you're probably familiar with. I don't know if you Google them and see what pops up. I don't know if you want to be their peers, but you might not be aware, there is one other district that was not a member of MASC, North Attleboro, for several years, and they ended up elected to come back to MASC because they needed to use the services provided by MASC. So, I mean, obviously, my opinion is that we should remain in MASC. I understand there's some, you know, disagreement with a couple of things that were on Twitter, but overall, there is a lot of benefit for being part of this institution and, you know, political disagreements and some grievances with members of the MASC shouldn't, you know, take that away. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Peter. Anyone else in person? Then we'll go to online. Switches online? I don't know if that's regular.
Yes.
Pretty small. Somebody?
Yeah, why don't you just say whoever wants to?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Whoever is joining remotely, if you would like to speak, please unmute yourself and do you have your name and address for the record?
Hi, this is Nikki Turpin. Can I be heard? Yeah. Awesome. So it is really hard to describe how immensely challenging it is to alert someone that they are on fire and in return that they are lighting the world on fire. As usual, I refer to Greg Thomas. It seems that Mr. Thomas refuses to educate himself and yet speaks as though he has information from reputable spaces when it comes to students and their ability to be fully educated on not just academics, but themselves. In this case, Mr. Thomas believes that a retweet is information enough to support leaving MASC, along with an inaccurate idea that they are political agency. This and other comments made by Mr. Thomas show his clear ineptitude when it comes to supporting all students. Mr. Thomas takes issue with MASC, whose mission is to just achieve excellence in school leadership through advocacy, training, and service. He's upset about their stance that police presence does not belong in school, a stance which is largely founded on reality that minority students are often unfairly targeted in these situations. That funding could better help with mental wellness initiatives, a topic we need to address as we've reached our double-digit overdose case in our high school population. He's also using the media to stir people up and to get them up in arms about sex ed for kindergarteners. Never mind that this is proportionally offensive article from NPR, it's talking about teaching kids how to ask for consent for any touch at that age. As usual, he's twisting facts to fit his own agenda. Mr. Thomas can't even take the time to read a children's book, yet we are to listen to his opinion about how and who to leave them alone with and what books to ban and with whom he should be in alliance with. Knowing who Mr. Thomas is and observing not only what he posts, but the people he follows, I do not take a risk in stating he is against women having equal full rights to control their uteruses. Perhaps this is why he does not wish to see them given information. He forgets that public school is for all and consistently demonstrates his belief that his personal values outweigh the needs of this community. The larger problem lies with people like Greg Thomas, who want to control and manipulate the public school education system for what he and they want. He is wasting our time, this misinformation, and fairly racist ideologies have no place in our public school systems. But maybe I am wrong, and I guess the only way I would know that is if tonight, Mr. Thomas went on the record and stated he stands up and beside BIPOC and trans students, our most vulnerable population of students, and will make sure that the Leominster public schools will serve them equally.
You're too measured up.
Thank you. Yes, online, if there's anybody else who would like to speak, if you can unmute yourselves and provide your name and address for the record? Give one more opportunity for anybody in person or online who would like to speak, please either unmute yourself or come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. And last call, if there's anybody online or in person who would like to provide a public comment, please state your name and address for the record. That being said, we will close public comments. Communications?
There are no communications this evening.
Thank you. And superintendent report?
I'm going to be super brief. We have our two students here today who each have a report, so love what you have to offer. Very quickly, don't know where September went, but it's over. This month has been a complete blur, but it's been an amazing start. We're in good shape and all aspects of their comments, and we will speak to that as well. I want to make sure parents understand there's no school Mondays, we have a long weekend, so for those of you that like to go camping south, it's a, it'll be a nice time. Hopefully, the weather warms up a little bit. Today was very cold in the building, so I hope campings are a little bit warmer. Open houses are 90% complete. We just have our middlest customers this upcoming, I believe it's October 12th and 13th, from Priest and Bennett. So if anyone wants to attend those, they're a lot of fun, actually. And this week, you know how there's always something going on every week to celebrate? This week was Custodians Week, and I actually want to say, if you ever get a chance to thank one of our custodians, they have worked so hard to keep these buildings clean and functioning and updated. The building's really nice. They, they work so hard for staff, they move anything they ask them to do or carry boxes. So if you happen to see a custodian, even when you leave this evening, just say thank you. And lastly, it came a little bit late, but there is a three-page list of some of the mental health services that we use, just some of them. Times have been pretty tough. Things, things have been surfacing. And so this is just a list of resources that you can share with whomever you want. We are going to post this as a staff and as a community. There have been events that have arisen, the fact that we need to reach out to these services. And with that being said, I do want to acknowledge what's happening in Florida right now, that's impacting a lot of our staff, our family, community members. All of us know somebody or have somebody down there that's either been impacted, lost something they had. It's a pretty stressful time. So schools are still closed, no internet, no service. So if there's somebody around that is struggling, feel free to share these services. We have people on board at the schools as well that are willing to talk to any student, any staff member, and we can help put some extra services in. So thank you. Hard to be green, as I really want to have our two stars go. Paul, do you mind starting first?
Yeah. It's hard. Thank you. So I was given the opportunity to do a student report for Leominster CTE. So our co-op programs at CTE has actually started up, about 33 students on co-op jobs. And we have a goal of having at least over 60 students by the end of the school year doing co-op, especially with juniors that are eligible for the co-op programs in January. Also, our assistant principal, Mr. Christopher Kind, is finishing up his Leadership Academy One program. This program runs a little over a year, and it's created to prepare vocational leaders for leadership positions in the future. We also started a new business program, a business and technology program, with over 20 students currently enrolled. We received state approval, which was accepted for all the curriculum, as well as the space that was approved. Not only that, but CTI is preparing for the NEAS NC 10 Years Evaluation, which stands for the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. This program is essential to ensure that CTE is an accredited school so that students can get into college after high school. Not only that, but we have a couple of new things. We have a new dean this year, Mr. Jim Kelly, who's doing an amazing job establishing reports of students as well as the faculty, and he is greatly showing his upwards because there's no kids in the hallways. Everyone is in class, learning, and learning and on time. So carpentry, so carpentry at the moment has rebuilt new dugouts at De Santos Field on 40 Bernice Avenue in Leominster, which is great. We also, there are also, there's also a first house built in the carpentry program, and they're adding another addition to the first house that was built. And then not only that, but the sophomore students in carpentry are building a shed for our retiree in Leominster. We also have three new teachers for the new shops. So we have plumbing, Mr. Chavari, electrical, Mr. Galinger, business tech, Mr. McGurney, and all three are doing a fantastic job, which is quoted by our principal, Mr. Bigshot. We also have, currently now, with everything that is being updated, the shop teachers have hard access to their shops now, so they can actually just swipe a card to come in instead of going through the whole main office. Not only that, but our electrical program is helping to maintain the security system of our schools, performing all updates and repairs without any labor cost to the state. Not only that, but our culinary arts is maintaining our Appleseeds Restaurant, which we usually have our school committee meetings in. And our restaurant actually has undergone renovations, which includes ancient speakers in the ceiling, meaning no wires, an interactive TV, and brand-new floors, and we're also having new booths and tables that will be available soon. Not only that, but our culinary program has received over $100,000 worth of up-to-date equipment. This new equipment is a state-of-art and allows the faculty, as well as the students, to train on equipment that they will find in the real world. Not only that, but we have our machine shop. Mr. Macamara, the machine shop instructor, is running an after-school program through the Workforce Investment Board of North Central Massachusetts, which is running from September all the way to November. This program is geared towards training post-graduates on how to operate CNC equipment, which helps guarantee that they will get a fund through the Workforce Investment Boards. And our CAD program, our drafting CAD program, has received all new computers, up to date, bringing them to the standard of the industry today with our updating technology. Graphic Communications, Graphic Communications has been busy making shop t-shirts, a sweatshirt for several shops of students to wear, especially if you're a senior, you will want to get your senior shirt this year. Recently, they have modeled a storage room, and they converted it into a border room, increasing the productivity to three times of what they're capable of, which is awesome to hear. Not only that, but we want to do a special thanks to Carpentry, Electrical, and Graphics for working efficiently to make this come true, with the whole new remodel storage room. H-VAC, they've performed filter maintenance to all rooftop air conditioning units, allowing for students to experience the real workforce. And additionally, anyone with a need of an air conditioning tune-up, you guys can bring it to the students of H-VAC that will fix it up and tune it up for you. And lastly, we are doing, our CTI secretary, Karen ABR, has been taking care of work permits, especially for students who are going out to the workforce. Their, CTI has been issuing all work permits for any students at the high school campus that needs it, and yeah, our school is going pretty good. Great, thank you. It's very important.
So, excuse me, reading this off my phone, but my printer was not being kind of. Okay. So, first-term power reports have been published on Aspen. Families who do not have access to Aspen should use the Google form on the school website, under the Parents and Students tab, so they can see their students' grades. In sports, Blue Devils football is still undefeated, and all other varsity fall sports teams have been winning records in a great fall season, one of the best I've seen in like a long time. Homecoming is coming up in a couple of weeks with a dance on October 22nd. The marching band, in addition to their halftime shows, is competing the next few weekends, and we wish them luck. And the LHS theater season kicked off with the interclass plays. Two highlights were the performance of Mr. Bergeron as an overly talkative corpse in the staff play and an inspired interpretation of the tragical tale of Melissa McKinney McNormus. In club news, LHS has 31 different clubs that are meeting with a lot of student involvement. A club fair arranged by Mrs. Murphy helps students get involved in LHS clubs. Just a few club highlights, NHS is selling chocolate bars if anyone has an extra. I put that note in because I was going to sell you guys them, but I actually sold that out, so.
That's not hard.
Not for me. Should have hit us up on the record while we were recording.
Stump raffled off a chance to pie a t-shirt in the face, which is really fun. Four teachers will get a pie in the face on Friday. We appreciate Dr. Romano, Mr. Sheehan, Mrs. Murphy, Mr. Romahani, and Mr. Bergeron for being willing to do that for us. Stump will also be hosting a debate on October 13th between state representative, representatives' candidates John Dombrowski and Natalie Higgins. Give is helping out at Sholen Farms this weekend, and many LHS students helped out at the Johnny Appleseed Festival. The Debate Club with Mr. Lafayette has launched a mock trial team and elected its officers, which is really exciting. I'm part of that, too. And Mr. Smith started a culture committee to work on building a more positive school climate for a culture at LHS, which was kind of, you know, I guess, reaction to the whole discussion we had last time, so that's really cool that we're doing something to like, you know, move towards that. Librarians from the Leominster Public Library will be at LHS on Friday to assist students in getting library records. It'll be working with Mr. Freo, who works in the Media Center. PSATs will be held at LHS on October 15th. The PSATs are a great way to practice for the SAT, which many colleges still look at for admissions, and the PSAT qualifies you for the National Merit Scholar Program. Students should sign up in guidance, and it costs $30. Lilian Wyckoff, Min Bu, and Jack Moyen were National Merit Commended Scholars last year from LHS. Lilian and Min have also been nominated for the Presidential Scholar Program and will compete against nominees from schools across the state, which is very exciting. And that's it. Thank you, Matt.
Mr. Chairman, this is Dean.
Yes, sir.
Greg R. is waiting to get in. He's in the waiting room, I guess, and he just texted me, waiting to get in.
Dean, I don't see him, unfortunately, in the waiting room.
Okay. He said he's, he said he logged in and everything, and now he's just, he's in the waiting room. And I'll, I'll text him.
Okay. If you need me to, I can send him another link as well.
Do you have his cell phone number?
I do not.
Let me see if I can, let me see where he's at.
We would have his email, so maybe I can just mail it to him, unless it's in there.
Susan D., Greg R.
Yeah. I couldn't email him.
All right, well, we'll keep going. Okay, so we're on to presentations and discussions.
Great. We are bringing forward three pieces of assessment this evening. As you know, all of our assessments are starting to come together to paint a picture for each of our students. Each piece is a piece of a puzzle that we're working through, and this team has sat and gone through all the personality statistics. Have any questions? It's a very heated presentation. I think I can see them. There's one way. I can make sure I'm on. Renee?
Okay. Val, can you put the presentation up so that they can see it on the screen, please? Okay, while you're doing that, thank you. You get to hear my lovely voice again tonight. This time, I'm bringing some DIBELS in MAP data that was taken. There is, we have not finished MAP testing our kindergartners, so that data will be for grades one through five, but DIBELS is K through five, so we'll get started. I'm going to stop off with the DIBELS. So DIBELS, as you can read up here, some of these slides, I know have a lot of words, so I'm going to just kind of skim through them, but at least you'll have the information in front of you. DIBELS being these dynamic indicators of basic early literacy skills. So all our students K through five take DIBELS. DIBELS is a fluency test also, so a teacher is, takes a child individually, so every student is tested individually on this. We have a team, we call the sweep team, that goes in, and they take the test with the sweep team. This is administered in K through five, like I said. It is literally one-minute tests to measure that what they can use to detect risk and monitor the development of early literacy skills. Each subtest has been thoroughly researched and demonstrated to be reliable and valid. And DIBELS results, we use them for evaluated individual student development and provide grade-level feedback towards validating instructional objectives for teaching staff. This is overwhelming, but then when we get into the reports, if you need to look at it, like keep it to the side, it gives you the five, four different, I mean, five different areas that we test, what, why we do it, and what's important, and then all your abbreviations and what those mean to the right. So I could sit there and say, you know, letter, name, fluency, but in your report, it might say LNF, so you have all the abbreviations of what those are. The next slide shows you, this is our fall data for K through five in the district. And so if you look at this data, we did what we do with the data, is we took a takeaway, and then we did one that we know that we need to work on. So our first takeaway in looking at this data are grades three through five, 53 to 60% of our students are doing very well and at very low risk for future reading difficulties. Grade two, we know across the board, and you'll see this also in the map, is indicative of learning loss due to our COVID, them not having a kindergarten in place in front. A lot of our students not opting for kindergarten and coming in at first grade, so we're going to continue reaching those individual needs of our second graders through some intervention, which I'll, I'll explain in a couple of minutes. Any questions on that slide?
I just have a quick question on the K and first, how do those compare to just the general student, whether or not it's coming during COVID?
It's, well, that's kind of hard, because a lot of our kids in kindergarten, like, you know what I mean? We don't, we don't have that. But right now, across the board, like in all the districts that we're working with, whether it's a grant or not, second grade is the grade that a lot of our schools and areas are struggling with. So, you know, they're asking on our boards, what are we doing? How are we doing it? And for us, I can, I can share that now. Grade two, two years ago, we took away foundations from that, from them, because they were using the wonders fully, and so now what they've done is across the team is they've done a 30-minute intervention on top of their regular 120 minutes for any students who need foundations, and then the students who, who are at or above are getting activities that will enrich them in different ways, whether it's a book club or it's, sometimes we're having them on Zern to help with the intervention around math, because they could be really good readers, but they might not be good in math, so they're using that 30-intervention period for a lot of different services to reach the individual needs of our students right now. Yes, Ron?
I liked the presentation for the, where it says guided DIBELS assessment. I put two little arrows with the phrenic awareness and phonics, where it says sign fluency, phonics segmentation. It does, does it demonstrate any difficulties between those that speak only English and those that are bilingual?
So our bilingual, it does show difference, because a lot of our bilingual students might not have nonsense words, because they don't have the vowel, consonant vowel sounds down yet. So it depends. So when they give this one test, our teachers take notes. So in K1 and 2, they get tested and have three different tests, and then they are progress monitoring with any area, and they're, and they re-taught those through the foundations with double dosing. So yes, each child has their own. Some students are really good readers, they can, they can read fast, and, but when you go back, like in the upper grades, they don't know the, they didn't comprehend one thing, so we look for that, too. So every test will give us what the needs are, and if you give me one minute, if we go to the next slide?
I'm just.
Yep, no, if you go to the next slide. So this is a report that the teacher gets, and I didn't put the students in there, because obviously, we can't put the students' names in there, but a student, a teacher gets this report, so like in this student, this report right here, 15 students were core instruction given. They don't need any intervention at this point. They're on the path, they're reading fluently, they have their nonsense words, and they're moving in the right direction. And then the ones to the right, group four, there's four students that will get intense intervention, and that's where we've hired our academic content teachers and our academic tutors, who have now set up their schedules to go in and service very specific groups of students in K through three, to provide intervention for these students to get practice.
The difficulties, these points you have over here, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to beat a dead rabbit. Are they showing, are they having difficulties auditory?
So I know who the four students are, because I took the teacher's thing, so two of them else, and they just came to the country, so they really couldn't read much of anything, so we're hoping. So we're hoping. Yep, and two, and one's a special ed student, so that's already.
Is it auditory? Is it visual? Uh, is it memory? Uh, because when, if bilinguals, they'll think in one language.
Yeah.
They'll come out in the other language.
Um, well, I think some of it is auditory, but I also think it's just us preparing them with the right correct sounds and the, and they have sight word cards and they have high fluency cards and they do nonsense words and they keep practicing, where they will become broke to memory. So hopefully that they'll pick up those sounds and they'll continue moving on like the rest of our kids do. That's why we provide them with intervention specifically around the skills that they need.
Sometimes the sound, sound different.
Oh, definitely.
I'm not, I'm not trying to be cute.
No, no. And it's, and that's why it takes them five to eight years to like learn in our language. So we just try to keep giving them those interventions to keep having them move in the right direction.
All right, thanks.
No problem. So that's the DIBELS, um, data. If we move on to the MAP data, MAP stands for Measured Academic Progress. Again, MAP is also given to all our students and it's an individualized test. So our students sit at, um, a computer, they take the questions and they read the readings and they answer the questions. Depending on where they land, they can advance to the next. So sometimes they go to something a little bit lower to see if they caught them on something. But it's all balanced around what they know as the test moves forward. Teachers monitor that test. So if a student's going really fast, they can say, um, go over to the child, stop the test and say, take a deep breath, go for a walk, come back and let's start again, like, you know, let's start again. So that kids are taking their time and they know that they can raise their hands, say, I need a break and off they go. Um, so this is, um, a, a series of, like I said, correct answers. And then it gets slightly harder and harder to see where they're at. Um, the purpose is to best support learning and individualized instruction again. And we complete this test also along with our DIBELS, our fall, winter and spring. Go to the next slide. Here's our grade one through five. And as you can see, our second grade is still our most challenging, um, grade for, um, in math. Because math does have a lot of reading, um, by second grade. And if you look at the next slide, which is reading. Thanks, Kyle. So that's where there, um, still are still struggles. But if we go to our takeaways, um, on the next slide, math, three in fourth grade had the highest percentage of students who placed in the sixty-first percentile or greater, which is a great, um, a great, um, thing for us at this time. And at least one third of all our students placed in the bottom twentieth is our takeaway around that. So we know that we are going to be working on math, um, and the different interventions around that. But we also, um, know that this is the year that we are putting in, um, our, starting our math, um, team to look at our curriculum for next year because math will be our elementary, um, math new curriculum for next year. For reading, about half or more of our third, fourth and fifth grade students placed in the sixty-first percentile or greater, which is great. About a quarter of our students placed in eighty side, eighty, sorry, percentile or greater in all grades but first. And most students placed in the bottom twentieth and first, second and third. Then in fourth and fifth. So we still know that we are still working on those skills of our, our basic reading skills in our K one and two. And we know that we are working on that, um, consistently with our intervention teams and looking at our data on a consistent basis. Just to kinda give you, our parents get a report every year, three times a year. They don't go home right after, they go home with the first, um, at the conference time in November, then in January with our report cards and then again in June. And I just wanted to show you, um, what those, that DIBELS report explains. It provides all our students' benchmark assessment data that's there. It answers how much they've grown, if needed to meet the goal, what students' performance history across the multiple years. So it shows the reports, which I'll show you in a second, and how much growth there has been as they move forward. So this is an example of a, a student that, and I, I didn't mean to pick a student that was green, but I did. Um, but this student's report looks like this when the parent gets it. So they know that right now they are green, so they're at core. Um, other students will have a, um, might have a blue, might have a red, might have a yellow. And a, a, attach that report is, um, also ways that parents can support those kids in those, the areas of need. And that shows you what you can do for help with nonsense words, shows you what you can do about sight words. Um, so parents get that report too. So in the whole year, in June, they get the report from the beginning, the middle and the end, which is shown on the next slide. Yep, sure.
The, uh, this paper, it'll be here. Colors, core support, green, green, is it green?
Yep, green is core.
And the other one is blue?
Yes, that's core.
What's the difference in the core support, green and blue?
Um, so core support is basically that they're saying that any students who gets the word work during the regular core tier one instruction will be able to handle that and, and keep going. And some of the ones that are in the blue, some teachers might not pull them for small group for any word work because they are there, they will just continue working on the other skills and they need like comprehension, um, in, in writing at this point.
Numbers. Seventy-two, twenty, forty-eight, seventy-two. Is that how many students there are?
Nope, that's the number they received. So if you, yep, if you, um, so this child read seventy-two words correctly in a minute. And so when they look at the words, they have, um, the nonsense words, they have, um, so they, that's what they, that's what they test. And then, and then they, the score comes, when they enter the score, it tells them what they got.
And the M D and M D, what does that mean?
The M D.
No data, yeah. No data.
No data, yeah, yeah, sorry.
So then, M D mean no data? Yeah, because if you come down here, it tells you, then fill in, in.
Oh, okay, all right. Yeah, I'm sorry, I got stuck in the weeds again.
That's okay. And so even if you look at the maze where it says Mary Maze at halfway down or three quarters of the way down, that's the comprehension and how much they actually understood when they read it. Um, so that's, um, six and they won't get that next, um, if, if it's a green or a blue or red till the next time because that's the first time they've had data on that.
I, I think, can they, can they have the red and what's the other color?
The red and yellow?
The yellow?
Yep, so some of our students, that's okay.
I have to ask what colors they are.
So some of our students work really hard to get out of that red and, and yellow. And some of our students, um, will struggle with that depending on, um, what's that. But we, we do a lot of, like I said, there are tutors and academic teachers that are pulling those kids and giving them double dosing of foundations and specific, um, skill-based, intensive skill-based instruction on what there is needed. So we're gonna hope that when I come back to you guys in the spring, that you're gonna see the growth in all this data.
Do they have an expiration date?
What, what has an expiration date?
How long can they be at the red and how long can they be at the yellow?
Well, there's no expiration date because we don't have to, it expires. We keep working with them, hoping. No, we just keep working with them, hoping.
What happened?
So when we look at the data, Ronnie, so let's say a child is in the red or the yellow, three years and we've done all this intense, you know, it might be something that we have to put towards a tech team or we have to put towards some other type of, of looking at different, um, options. But we just keep working away at these, you know, at these students with our, uh, interventions. And we just wanna keep moving them because we know that all our students can learn. So we just keep trying to move them in the right direction. And hopefully our parents, when they get the parent report, will help us out with reading with their children and, and helping those children with their little flashcards they get sent home and stuff. No problem. Um, the math growth, we talk about the RIT score. So RIT growth is the difference in the RIT score from fall to spring, which you'll see on that report. Um, RIT growth projection shows how much growth a child makes from fall to spring. Um, the percentile is, it shows how well the student performed on the test compared to students with similar ability. And as for example of that, because I know we have had this conversation before at school committee, a student with seventy-five, seven percentile make ranking means that the student performed better than seventy-seven percent of their student peers. It's not like they only got a seventy-seven on the test. So I just wanted to make sure that that was, um, clear. If you go on to the next, um, slide, it'll show you the math report in a, in a ELA report that a parent gets. So they get their student and they show, one more slide, one more slide, sorry, Kyle. One more. So that's the report the child is sent home with. So as you can see, the fall test was a two hundred, Ronnie. And then they have the, the two twenty-one is where they're supposed to be in the spring. And that's what we hope for. If you look at the column where the RIT, RIT growth is, you can see this child has been taking this test since fall of eighteen. And you can see what the, each of the growth expectation was and where that student fell in that growth. So a parent also sees that.
And what's this thing on the right with the twenty, uh, on the lettering? What's on it? With the peppermint stuff?
The RIT projection, the projection, because right here. Oh, that, that's what they want to be at.
That's what they want to be at, that's their goal at the end of the year. Yeah, that's their goal. Yeah, peppermint stick, yeah. And then the next one is reading, which is the same, is presented the same way to parents around their reading report. Same thing, they have a, a RIT growth and then they have their growth projection of what they're, um, actually supposed to be at and what they got. That's a little bit about, um, the data that we received. Once again, we are really working hard with our, um, grade two right now. All our schools are concentrating on grade two. We have a team of, um, intervention staff at each building. They are now got the data, they, we had data meetings last week. They have created their schedules with their tutors in pairs and they started yesterday, oh no, today, today's Monday, sorry. Started today with their schedules to grab groups of kids. So like for an example, we have two part-time, um, pairs and they might go grab, um, fluency groups every twenty minutes. And so they go grab the kids out of two classes that need it, they give them the fluency, then they bring them back. Um, what's nice about this is that they look at the data as a team. So our pairs, our tutors, our academic content teachers are all involved in this data with the classroom teachers. So they know what's happening, they're planning ahead, so they know what they're each doing and that students are really getting the intensive, um, need of skills and intervention that's hopefully will rise our second graders up for, by the spring.
The, uh, the, the, oh, oh, thank, thank, good reading. The blue is the student, thinking blue, then the, the other color in the middle, orange, that is, that's for the.
That's the district grade level.
And then the state, the third one?
The third one is just the norm. So it's not state, it's national. So any, um, student was taking this test.
So there's no state here thing?
No.
Okay, I, I thought that was.
No.
I thought I was missing something. This thing over here, two, two, seven and two twenty-one, is that the, is that the state? I mean, the federal, the peppermint sticks?
No, that's the national norm that's set by this, the NWA. Um, for this student in particular, so every student has a different, um, target depending on where they're located. So that's how the norm data goes.
Yeah, it's Greg, Greg, are you trying to raise your hand online, Greg R.? I don't know if he was trying to add something. But it's up, it popped up in the chat.
Okay.
Greg can unmute.
Is he on again? Is he, did he make it on?
Can you type it in? Can you type it into the chat?
It looks like Dean, he is on, but he can't unmute. So maybe he can type something in the chat.
Okay.
Okay. Now, it's fixed. I didn't mean to raise my hand, sorry. No, okay, well, at least we know you cannot mute. Josh, go ahead.
I have a question. You mentioned, um, suggested parent support for kids who are in need of that. Are there any sort of discussions for second graders in general, in the whole, um, to kinda give some suggested support that parents can do now in that, that, that group might need, they get need, maybe they can call for it?
Yes, sir. Um, so at Open House, our, um, we call them academic content, but our title ones had given out some materials for all our second grade teachers to hand out to help with that. Um, and then, um, that, then like I said, we're gonna just give this first round of, um, intervention and see where we're at. But then we add conferences, we provide a lot of that information of where we go because then we have a better take of what they're doing. Um, you know, it, we, when we do these tests, sometimes, like I said, this is, even though the first grade did it, um, a lot of new students, a lot of, um, there's kinda ways in, a different ways. So we, um, will definitely make sure we put that in, into play and ask our second grade teachers. But, um, if you know any of our second grade teachers, they're sending home extra materials, they're sending home their flashcards there. Um, you know, the other day I was on the, they're like, do you have these that we can send home instead of us copying them? And I, you can print them right from the program, they're like, perfect. So I know they're sending things home to help parents. Um, but we will definitely send that out too and to make sure that they're, that all people are doing that. You know, our teachers do that well with K through five. Um, you know, they send home whatever those students need. I know my L staffs are sending home little books every day now for them to read, to practice. So, um, they really want kids, now that they're back in school, um, involved in the reading and taking part and doing as much as they can to keep moving us forward.
Just really quick, I just wanted to say thank you to all the kids, the elementary school teachers, but really the first through third grade teachers, as I'm looking at this third and fourth grade data because they had the kids at home for hybrid the last few years. So for these kids to be doing as well and parents as well, but yeah. Lots of confidence in where our second graders will get to because they have them now.
Yeah, that's why I was trying to do the takeaways of the three through five. They really held their own, they did a nice job.
Yeah, definitely seems like the elementary students are bouncing back very well. So thank you. Anybody else? Students or anybody else? Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you very much, Ronnie.
Okay, Ms. Lauren?
The other piece of data that, uh, we brought to your attention this evening is our AP results from last year at our high school in CTEI. So you have a one page with three different, uh, data descriptions or displays for you just to orient you to what we have on this page. In the top left is the percent of total AP students with a score of three plus. Uh, that's for, for those of you, um, who might be unsure. If a student takes an AP test in order for them to be able to apply that for that course and pay for it at the college level, they need to score a three, a four or a five. So what you have here is a bar graph showing you where we've been since from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-two. And you'll notice that we call our pre-pandemic, which is two thousand and nineteen, we were at seventy-two percent of our AP students with a score of three plus. Um, we took a dip in two thousand twenty-one and we are making some nice progress in two thousand twenty-two. We are not back to pre-pandemic at this point, but we've gone from a fifty-two percent, um, last two school years ago, two thousand twenty-one to sixty-two percent, excuse me, sixty-three percent for last year. The top right hand gives you information about the number of students, the number of exams, and then the percent of students with a three plus. So it's really some of the same data, it's in a chart for you instead of a bar graph. And you will see that we have approximately the same number of students who are taking our AP classes over the last few years, one forty, one fifty, one forty-five. You will see that we have, um, a number of students who take more than one AP class. So, uh, we have that, that's why they tell us the number of students, then the number of tests that are actually taken. And as an aside, it is the assumption that if a child takes an AP course, they will be sitting for the AP exam. There are very few students who don't. It may be because of an illness or a family emergency, some other drastic schedule issue that we can't make up. But the students who do take the courses do all take the exams.
When these exams usually administered?
They're in, um, I think the end of April and in May. And it's a scheduling, it's, um, it was online during the pandemic year and now it is face to face. You can ask our guidance counselors because it is a scheduling nightmare. We take advantage of wherever we can across the city. So there are times when the Elks or the Knights of Columbus open up their doors and we have small groups that would be there. We use any empty room that we can, but they, they are done during the school day and then into the afternoon. So we try to get a quiet, studious place for our students to be able to take the exams. So a big shout out to the guidance counselors who do that scheduling for our teachers.
We'll say that. So it was initially reading through it, you know, I think it was very minor indeed, I guess I would say is not too offensive, but I think when I did a little bit more digging into kind of what organization was quoted in that article, it upset me a lot more. So there was a piece of the comprehensive sex ed in kindergarten, which I don't agree with, should be up for parents. But as I explored the advocates for youth, which is responsible for the three hours sex ed program, I've kind of explored their YouTube channel, their YouTube channel has playlists that advocate for defunding the police and it advocates for protester training in lieu of the George Floyd riots, you know, teaching teenagers how to, what they should say if they get arrested, who they should call, all these things. And I found it to be very inappropriate. Finding out that this is the sex ed program in another district Worcester advocated for by the same person, advocating for the same things, which ended up brings full resources out of the district. So I mean, that was offensive. Historically, there have also been other things that both the executive director Glenn Kuchar had mentioned in, you know, supporting the NSBA, NSBA, yeah, NSBA in the recommendation calling parents terrorists to the state department. And that was kind of, that was the thought process there. So that was my feeling. Everybody kind of gave their own voice to.
Josh?
Um, I would say at this time, I'm not ready to separate from the school committee, the mass association, the school committees. And for a couple of reasons, number one, the, the article that was shared last week, I'll say you're right, the, the content was minor, I think. My opinion, especially the kids who were K through two behind from the pandemic, I think could probably use some of this awareness education that the article spoke of. And for that, I lie myself 100% with. Another reason that, you know, it mentioned age appropriate throughout the article. And, and just because an agency of root has different ideas doesn't mean that I'm not open to hear them, right? So I'm open to different ideas from groups I may not align myself with. I actually applaud them. We're including them so that we're aware of all of the things that are being discussed on a national scale. So for me, I think retaining membership would be my vote if it was motion made.
Josh?
Kind of echo what Josh said a little bit. I think the term they used in the article, sex education, you know, maybe look like triggers, it's like a trigger word. I think could have been, worded being a little bit differently. Like you said, Greg, a lot of stuff that was in that was from a different section that was part of that article. But I, I, I'm not comfortable separating right now. I think a lot of the sex ed should be at a parent level. But the stuff mentioned in the article, what they're trying to do with the kindergarten, I don't think we're not going to separate from right now.
Brad?
I don't really know where to begin. Quite frankly, I'm disappointed. Because Mr. Greg, it wasn't just that you talked about in your, okay? You also talked about the negotiations, another negotiation, you balked the negotiation. It's father concerned, the negotiation should be put on hold because of what you did. Secondly, you want to take out of M A S C. For whatever reason, you were in the tea leaves and yet it wasn't the way you're portraying to be. I want to stay with M A S C because they do a good job keeping us abreast. You do not represent me or anyone else here. You represent only yourself. When you talk out there in the land, you're only representing yourself. No one else. You're at the table. Yes, you are, you are the vice chair and you're representing here. When you're out there, you're not representing, you're not, should not representing me. You're representing only yourself. We have policies and procedures that we've tried to follow. If you were going to give a something with the radio, you should have cleared it with the chairman. You know, imagine if we all start having press conferences. What the heck would happen? What kind of show would we have on the road? I'm not happy and I'm disappointed. I, I, I Google everything to find a way to have you centered for your behavior.
Okay.
And that's it.
They caution us.
I know, I'm just saying, I'm just saying my piece. I didn't say anywhere else. I didn't, I didn't call a press conference. I didn't write a letter, nothing.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Ron. Brandon?
So a lot of what I was thinking about preparing for tonight's meeting was already said, so I, I don't think I need to go on too long. But tackle my colleagues, first of all, I would share my disappointment. I think that M A S C is an invaluable resource that provides us with information and not just us, but provide school committees across the Commonwealth with information. An article was posted with a title that a member didn't like, and I'm okay with that because I, there probably are articles that they post that I don't like. But at the end of the day, it's a resource. Nothing that comes out of M A S C is something we have to do. We get policies from them all the time that go right to the policy subcommittee and we could change them. If, as long as it's still in line with what the state law says, we don't have to follow it to a T. It was mentioned in the public comment tonight about M A S C being a member driven organization. I think that's important. Because at the end of the day, every member driven organization is driven by members. And I feel if we as a committee don't agree with the direction, then maybe committee members need to stand up and start volunteering to serve on committees that M A S C running. I have served on a few in the past couple of months. And it's been an eye opening experience and I would strongly encourage my colleagues to do the same. Because I really think once you do that, you'll see the value in what M A S C has to offer. So I am not in support of leaving M A S C.
Melissa? So I want to keep it brief as well because a lot of what has been said already I agree with. And I'm happy to hear that we can have this discussion when we disagree or agree on certain topics. I think that's part of a democracy and that's part of teaching our kids how to work things out, especially in a time of conflict. But I will say I am a little bit disappointed when I heard radio interviews and news articles during COVID. Members of this committee disagreed and because of that, it was treated, treated as political. When in reality, it was just differences of opinion. And I think members in this situation have gone out of their way to make a topic political, when in reality, it was a personal opinion. So for that being said, I would not be backing leaving M A S C and I see it as a great resource, whether we agree or disagree at times.
Greg, Ron Bar, please virtual, would you like to comment?
Yes, I'll keep it brief. I wish I went first, but I echo everything that Greg Thomas has said. I, I'm I'm just, I'm disgusted that we could support another organization that's calling parents terrorists. I mean, it's, I don't even know what to say. It's, it's just, it's despicable that we would be associated with such an organization. I haven't, full disclosure, I haven't read enough on the topic of the kindergarten issue, so I can't, I don't want to say anything to that and I haven't had time to review it. So I'm, I fully support disassociating with, with them. Thank you.
Dean, would you like to comment?
Yeah, how much do we pay, out of my budget in front of me, but how much do we pay mass association of school committees every year?
Six thousand five hundred.
Okay. I mean, I, I, I mean, I've said this many times, I wish it was a group that supported, you know, urban communities. I think that every time we go down to the yearly convention, it's all driven by smaller, more wealthy communities. And Mr. Kooch has done a great job. I mean, I wish we had a cafeteria plan so we can pick and choose. There are a lot of, a lot of organizations that are out there, Conference of Mayors, National League of Cities, who, you know, we just have to decide in a priority, what is most important. And so we don't belong to a lot of these organizations, although they, you know, they might be good organizations, but but I, I think this is a good thing. I think everybody should be looking at. And I also think there's a certain amount of politics that goes on at the mass association of school committees as well. And I don't know if it's an organized effort or not, but I'd certainly like to see that cleaned up and I'll, I'll certainly address that, but but I, I, I think, you know, bringing these issues to light, this is a very good school committee who's open minded and respectful and will listen to each other's views. So I, I, I'm up for anything anybody wants to talk. I have no issue at all. I think that's our job and as long as we're respectful to each other. I, I, I think that's healthy and it's, and it's good and if it doesn't get personal, that means people are looking out for things and, you know, each member still hasn't given up their rights. You know, just because you become a school committee member, it doesn't give you up your right to support candidates or to speak freely about how you feel about a particular thing. As long as you don't, you know, a disclaimer saying, I don't represent the school committee, I'm a member, but these, these, you know, my, my, and, and I think looking back now, I was asked by one of the other committee members to, to kind of look into this. I, I didn't see where or hear anything that said the vice chair acted on behalf of the entire school committee, in fact, said on a number of times that he represents his own interest. So I think we do have to keep an eye on mass association of school committee. At this point, $6,000 might not seem like a lot, but for a kid that's struggling to be able to get a tutor or somebody to help him out or buy a uniform or. So I'll certainly be keeping my eye a little, a little closer on some of the topics that were talked about tonight.
Who said what?
Go ahead and then I, sorry.
I, Ron, I, I encourage everybody to listen to the, I can share it out if anybody wants it. But I, I counted seven times in the recording throughout the 10 minutes or so that I talked with the, with the with the host, that I did say that these were my views, they were not the views of the committee. And, and it was at least seven times that I counted it. So I just want to, because I, I do, I, I feel strongly about my opinions, right? But I know that not everybody here certainly shares my opinions. And I think that's evident of the discussion tonight and that's okay. So I appreciate everybody's concerns and everybody's feedback and I respect the decisions of the committee and recognize that we are nine people, not one. So, thank you.
I have a question about, I have a question. In the meeting chat room, are we supposed to be allowing the public to make comments right now?
No.
As they are.
And just so you know, we can't see those.
I can.
I know, but I'm telling you, the meeting members here cannot see them.
Well, I can see them.
So we are not responding to them or they're not part of our recorded meetings. Will not be responding to them. So I just wanted to say that obviously I have been on the committee for a long time. I have found M A S C extremely helpful for many of the things that people have already said, but certainly the new member orientation, which they provide, which everyone is required by law to take. The networking, this serve policy has been invaluable, superintendent search, it would cost us probably many, many thousands of dollars, probably double the amount of what we pay. And we, you know, have utilized that service a number of times throughout my history, but we will be doing it probably in the next couple of years as well. Advocacy, training, they are also, when I talk about advocacy, I know people are concerned about politics. A lot of the advocacy is around, you know, getting financial resources for the state, equal, equality, equity for all districts and not just at times the wealthy districts or whatever. At the M A S C conference that we go to jointly with the superintendents as well, there is an urban district meeting that focuses on urban issues. And we are part of that where we can raise issues and discuss things that impact us very differently than the smaller school systems. There is nothing that prohibits us as a school committee for coming up with amendments that can be presented to all the school committees across the state. We have not done that, but we certainly can do that. If an issue arises that we feel strongly that we want to bring to the membership. So we can have a voice. There are certain separate urban district meetings that we can participate in if folks want to do that. So there is a way for the urban districts to have a voice. The other thing is that, you know, M A S C does post things that are sort of topics across the country, not only in Massachusetts. Doesn't mean that they necessarily support that, but they're giving us information. And I want to be clear that we, as a school system and a school committee, we're not talking about sex and programs in any grade. That is not something that was on our agenda. That's not something that the superintendent or the school system is bringing up to us. So that is not something that we are taking action on or need to act on. That is not something that's before us. So even though that it was a tweet, it is not something that necessarily impacts our school district or anything that we're doing. And that was not something that we were addressing or contemplating discussing. So I just want to make that sort of clear to the public. And I appreciate Greg, you saying that you said several times that it was not your opinion. I think it's just real important. I mean, I'm sorry.
I was saying very much the same.
That it was your opinion, not the opinion of the school committee, because we are all individuals and we do not speak as a school committee or on behalf of the school committee unless it's something that we all have voted on. And then we present the majority opinion, regardless of what our opinion is, as a school committee. Certainly everyone has freedom of speech and can talk about things, but they're representing them as a private person and individual and not as a school committee member. And I think what got confusing was you said, you know, Greg, vice chair of the school committee, which I think lent it to feeling, at least from my perspective, that you were speaking on behalf of the school committee, which you weren't. So we do appreciate that you had to clean this, but I think in the newspaper article, it really, you know, promoted you as the vice chair.
Oh, the newspaper article, I didn't even know it was, I didn't know that was happening. That was before I even talked with anybody other.
Yeah.
That was without my involvement at all.
So I can appreciate that. So thank you for, you know, letting us know that. So at this time.
Can I just ask one, sorry, one question. Greg, these other four areas that we talked about, well, defending, defunding the police, the protesting training and such, was that something from the M A S C or is that something that supports the M S A C?
So, so, yeah, so good questions, right? So.
But basically what I, I'm sorry, I apologize. The base of what my decision with this whole thing was, based on the article that was initially shared, the tweet and everything else, which in my opinion, the tweet itself, like I said, sex ed, you know, kindergarten, all that was kind of all at the point when, when you read the article, it's more about personal space and interrupting stuff like that, which, that for nothing, I think should be taught at that age because my daughter, even at ten, it'll have personal spaces. But, but this other things, let's say, these other areas, was, was that ever directly shared by the M A, M A S C? Or anything like that, or?
Um, no. So, so, yeah, it was just digging into the article and the organization that's in the article and then the links to who generally posts those articles for M A S C. That's where it was really coming from. But, but some of the other things that historically I mentioned, the emails from Glenn regarding parents and terrorists, that was, that was a public records email. I think I sent that over. That was, but, but no, that the association between M A S C and those things are not, it's, it's indirect, right?
Can I make a motion that we retain our membership at N A S C?
Do I have a second? Is there any further discussion? If not.
Yes, yeah, no, oh, oh, hold on, this Dean. I, I want to make a point. I find it very interesting that we criticize the vice chair because he indirectly made statements that he obviously cleared up tonight, saying, hey, they wrote an article in the newspaper, I didn't even comment on it. But we have no issue with the mass association of school committee. So you, you understand what I'm saying here? The two parallels on one end, we're, we're, you know, we're making sure that Greg understands, he doesn't represent. Now, Ron who went on for, for at least five minutes on this issue, but nobody has an issue with the mass association of school committee. So what you're saying is mass association of school committee really doesn't have, have anything to do with these organizations, nor were they supporting that. But on the other hand, when Greg says, hey, listen, I was speaking as a member of the school committee, when I am, and I was elected by the people, but I'm also a citizen. So you understand, you know, you can't say one without the other. Either they're both the same or they're not. And mass association needs to walk carefully. Yes, they do some wonderful things, but they have gotten involved politically and they need to get themselves out of the politics in the state. Or, or, and Eileen, when you say that they, you know, that there's a place, I've been to those meetings before on urban issues. None of the issues that are before us for the convention are urban based, none of it. The whole association is driven by smaller, more wealthy communities. And that's been that way for 30 years that I've been involved. So that's, let's keep it, let's keep this straight. If we're going to criticize Greg and then not criticize the association, mass association of school committee. So we're defending them saying, wow, I didn't really have much to do with this. They, you know, they posted an article and they, you know. Well, I didn't see a disclaimer that says we don't have anything to do with this article. I looked at it. I didn't see anywhere where it says mass association of school committees don't support these things. So I'm led to believe that maybe they do. And, and I, and I hope I've drawn, drawn a parallel between the two because I think it's pretty ironic.
And Dean, I think, you know, you're right, we haven't brought things forward. And as a committee, maybe we do want to bring things back to the urban, you know, district membership and, you know, propose some, you know, amendments and things like that for things to be reviewed. There's nothing to stop us from doing that. And, you know, maybe we need to have some more advocacy. So I think that's a good point. So at this time, we have a motion in a second. Anybody else wishes for a discussion? Right? All those in favor? Greg and Dean, you'll be voice votes. Greg?
Yes, I'm not in favor of, no.
Your post, Dean?
Not in favor of, what is a yes vote?
The yes vote is to remain a member of M A S C.
I'll be a yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone, for your patience. And I think at this point, we're moving on to the approval of the minutes.
You can keep the gavel on this time. That went so well that I don't think we need the gavel tonight. We can get past that, we can get past any of this other stuff. Okay, approval of the minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from September 19th. Make one comment.
Yeah. Melissa brought up putting vaping issues discussed at a future meeting. It's not on tonight's agenda. I would very likely be on the next meeting agenda soon to get some discussion.
Were we, we, clarify for me, just like, um, fully remember, were we remanding that policy around a policy on vaping?
No, I think we had gotten, someone had spoken earlier in the meeting and that person is credited during public comment about their concerns about vaping. And also just as a parent of kids in the middle school and the high school, we're hearing it. So, and I, so I think part of it was to have maybe a little bit of information about what the staff is seeing, maybe from the deans or the principals and also what the discipline policies are.
So the discipline policies will be in our house, in the handbooks and the policies. So maybe just to refresh our memories about what those are in case people haven't read them because it's in line with vaping, any tobacco use, drug use, et cetera. But that doesn't mean they're being followed.
Great. I just have one other correction. I think under the present category, we should include the student reps names.
Yes, I agree. Thank you. Okay. Do we, do we need to make a new motion to include that?
No.
Okay.
Correct.
And, and you said second?
Yes, somebody else seconded it.
All those in favor? Voice vote, Dean, Greg?
Yes.
Greg? Approval of the minutes, Greg?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Finance, why do we keep calling it finance?
But it was not a financial. That's enough.
We are. Policy.
So we did not have a meeting since our last meeting, which I reported on. At some point, I'd like to just give an athletic advisory updates because we did have a lot of that.
Okay, do we, do we do that tonight or?
Your new world business or no? Things are fine, I can give them now.
Yeah.
And so the athletic advisory did meet and we have a lot of students involved in a lot of our fall offerings. And in general, our fall sports are going very well. With regards to the athletic field, the athletic director was going to ask the mayor for a plan to see what, because there's been so many plans floating about what a bare bones plan would actually look like and what parts, you know, were being, you know, projected to be fulfilled with the amount of money that the city has. And then we discussed other options and other things that may or may not be important. We also talked about, you know, if there's not the ability to have, say, a softball field there, do we invest more heavily in the lacrosse league field to make some renovations there so that we have, you know, a premier sport? We talked about bussing and those kinds of issues as well. So we're, you know, still in the, you know, we need to see what the plan looks like and what can or cannot be included. And then go from there. We talked about, you know, be for our track, whether that's something that we could, you know, even look at Doyle Field and refurbishing that, or whether we, you know, really makes sense to maintain that because what's the cost of a track around the fields. There was, you know, lots of terrifying information that we need before we can go forward. So yes, people plan to be, you know, involved and figure out what best benefits the majority of the students. We obviously are not going to get everything that we had hoped to due to the rising cost of everything, but it is something that's being worked out by the athletic director and the faculty.
Okay, so on to action items. First one on the list is the second reading public comment.
Speak a motion to approve the public comment. B E D H. I was seconded that question.
Just, just want to, I don't know if we want to vote, but I would like to have a discussion a little bit. And I will stipulate this by saying that I have been part of the policy subcommittee and I've been agreeable with the changes and on board with it. I have been getting some feedback from parents that are reminded of the pandemic and feeling the need to advocate for their children during meetings that may not necessarily have the topic on the agenda. And personally, I feel it too. I don't, I hope that we never get into a situation like this again, where parents are very unhappy with the decisions of the school committee. But I feel like not letting parents talk about things that aren't on the agenda is not necessarily the best idea now that I've heard from parents. So I, I just want to put that out there and see what other people think as well.
Can I say one thing? In the past, I just used to post the agenda, which was the place and the time. It was a violation of the open meeting law if we talk about things that are not on the agenda. So what it says is you have to put the things there to inform the public in case they want to come and speak about the things that are on the agenda.
And I do know that the city council only allows people to speak about what are things on the agenda. And I'm sure there's a lot of citizens in the community that might have other ideas, but I think, you know, but I think, you know, they can certainly outreach to the superintendent, to the principals. Um, your constituents could reach out to you, anyone of them, not you, but like all of us. Um, and that's something that we can bring and ask to be on the agenda as well. Um, so I think there's avenues for people to do that.
Yeah, I think the other, the other point is, Greg, I understand.
Josh is speaking.
Josh, go ahead. I was going to say the same thing. I urge people just to reach out to their representative, school committee representatives to bring items for. Don't have, uh, communication complicated in life in a lot of ways. Email, phone, text message, you name it, um, set up. We're approachable, where you can definitely reach out to us. Um, and we'd be happy to put something on the agenda that, so I speak for myself on that. So everybody.
Dean, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, I under, I, I mean, I totally understand it, but I think the only problem is Luamadillo, the first superintendent I worked with back when it first got elected, said, nobody likes surprises. The problem is if, I mean, we want to be in, we want to be prepared. I, I want to make sure that, you know, no surprises for the superintendent or any, anyone. And so if somebody brings an issue up, we want to be able to respond. And if we don't know what that issue is going to be, we can't be prepared to answer. The other thing is we can't really engage on, in a public forum anyway. So I guess you could bring it up a new old business, but it's a lot, I mean, it's, it, it just, I mean, anybody can say anything at the public forum. And then we get into, is that acceptable? You know, what somebody said, i- is that an issue that somebody else, if they knew you? In other words, if somebody knew you were going to bring something up or somebody from the public was going to bring something up, they might have participated in this particular meeting, but maybe there was something else that, at the time, they would have gotten a babysitter or who knows, gotten out of work, got online somewhere so that they could engage with this had they known it was going to be on. That's the whole issue of it's a public forum, it's an agenda and the agenda comes out. You know, the reason that it has to be out 48 hours before the meeting is so everybody has a chance to see what we're going to talk about. So I get you, Greg, and maybe you set up a forum, you know, open door or open forum at some point where, you know, office hours at the school department or at one of the schools where, you know, people can come in and, and chat with you. But I, do you understand, I mean, I think that's, that's the reason for, you know, the open meeting laws. If we were talking about something and like, I didn't know they were talking about that, I would have participated. If I had known that that was going to be something talked about, pro or con, whatever.
Yeah, it's, it's not us that's talking, it's the public providing the comment. We're not responding to what they're saying. But, but I understand that side of things. And I'm, and I'm not, and I'm not suggesting that this policy be reflective of this committee. I feel like everybody here is responsive and, and will meet with anybody. It's just that we're putting it in policy book, you know? It takes a while to change those policies. So I'm just trying to be play devil's advocate here and, and throw this, you know, throw this out there and apologize that it's a bit of a curve ball, but throw this out there so that we can discuss this and, and, um, maybe anybody who's watching can feel reassured knowing that, um, you know, we'll be supportive of it.
I think if there's something that you continually hear or it's an issue, if something's becoming an issue, then I think you could easily just ask me or, hey, you know, let's throw it on the agenda. It seems to be something that we're all hearing. Let's have a discussion about it. I don't think there's an issue with that at all.
Okay, granted, a different question to the policy chair. Um, if I remember correctly, at the last meeting, there was discussion about remote participation. Is that a separate policy? Because that does not mention that.
Right, we are, it's a separate, um, policy and we are tweaking it and it's not ready for the vote. Maybe we'll be discussing it at our next meeting.
Okay, perfect. I think that's important, so I hope to see that before us soon. Anybody else?
Yeah, I agree with Josh saying. They are all reachable and, uh, if there's any issues, it may be brought to be put on the agenda. Just all us text us and we'll let the, uh, the subcommittee sheet, she know about it and they'll put it on. That's the best way to, because as he said and everyone else said, when they talk about the public plan, we cannot answer. We can't respond unless we rate, unless we call for a timeout, then, then have a give and go between the talk.
Question there is, as a committee, do we have the opportunity? I know we traditionally have not, but do we have the opportunity to have a kind of? And I've seen it, I've seen it in some districts where they actually have like a question, answer forum.
That's what Dean just said.
Oh, like a meeting like that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. That's, that's, that's reasonable to me, though.
So we have a motion and a second. So I follow the question.
Yeah, cool. All right, all those in favor?
Yes, yes.
Dean will be a yes.
All right, asked unanimously. Vote on M A S C Joint Conference Representative. Motion to, uh, appoint Ron as the representative?
I second that.
I'll be very happy unless someone else here wants to vote.
Ron has historically been a hit.
I want, I want to go now.
But if anybody else.
I'm very happy to go, but you know, if there's someone aching to go, please, you know.
Go, Ron.
You're up.
All right. Okay, um, thank you. Do we, do we have a second?
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor?
Press.
Dean?
Yes.
All right, Ron, you're on your way. Okay. Thank you, bags. All right, uh, M A S C resolutions. Has everybody had a chance to read through them?
Typically, what we do is just, um, go through one by one, just to like the very first, like what this is saying, so.
Like reading in a classroom, you can all take turns to reading one? Yeah.
I mean, we don't have to read the whole thing, just the, find the title and adjust, if anybody has a question.
Paraphrase, paraphrase.
Really, just the title.
Okay, we're going to do it one by one, both?
Yes.
Okay. So Resolution One, Regarding Sanctuary Laws for Transgender Students.
I make a motion to, um, uh, support this.
Your second? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Greg?
Uh, yes.
Was that unanimous or not? Yes, yes.
Forgot to raise my hand, yes. Okay, Resolution Two, To Increase the Maximum Balance Allowed by the Special Education Reserve Fund. Motion to support.
Second it?
All those in favor? Aye.
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Right, passes. Resolution Three, Membership of the Board of, no, staple there, elementary and secondary. I figured, elementary and secondary education. Yeah, does anybody want me to read this one?
Yes, please.
Board and Secretary, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education has broad powers to set education policy and enact regulations for Massachusetts public schools. And whereas the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education has the power to choose a receiver to replace an elected school committee. And whereas the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education governs educator licensure in Massachusetts. And whereas practicing educators and school committee members are prohibited from serving on the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. And whereas the teaching profession is the only profession or trade in Massachusetts where the holders of a license are prohibited from serving on its governing board. And whereas professional expertise and a commitment to public governance should not disqualify a person from serving in a leadership role. Therefore, be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committee calls for the enactment of legislation, legislation to repeal the provision of Massachusetts law that prohibits practicing educators and sitting school committee members from serving on the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. Being further resolved, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls for legislation to rest, reconstitute the Board of Secu, of Elementary and Secondary Education by including members with expertise as licensed educators and members with expertise in public school governance.
I make a motion to approve that resolution.
Can I just ask for clarification? Is this, is this, they're saying that they are going to take the current chassis board and replace them with people that?
No.
Okay.
Just means that if there's an opening, someone who's currently a teacher with a license can, would be allowed to run for it.
Fair enough, okay.
And none of these are binding, just so you know.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
This, this, uh, number three and number four came about because of the, uh, the schools, the school district, they got, uh, uh, taken over by the state.
Silver City.
Silver City, Southbridge and, um.
Holyoke.
Holyoke.
Get it, get ahead of yourself, that's four.
Number three and number four, they're almost intertwined.
Yeah.
You know, and there's a lot of, uh, there's a conflagration.
That's all. All right, so, um, all those in favor?
Yes.
Greg? Dean?
Yes.
Support Resolution Three. Onto four. Uh, preserving local governance of Massachusetts schools. Does anybody want me to read that one?
Well, the only reason I was asking, Greg, doesn't it have to be read into the record?
No.
No, it's in the record because it's on the, uh, agenda, on the agenda.
Gotcha, sorry.
That's okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Yes.
Greg? Dean made the motion, do I have to ask? All right.
Aye.
But personal finance literacy education. Motion to, oh, I'm sorry, did I miss? No, no, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Got it.
Motion to support Resolution Five.
Second it?
Second, or most. All those in favor?
Is this for the financial, is this for the financial literacy? You moved a little quick for me.
I'm sorry, yeah, correct.
Okay, about time.
Yeah, Greg? You say yes, Greg?
I'll be a yes, Dean, yes.
Okay, good. All right. Onto, um, onto six. Uh, establishment of a regional school assessment reserve fund. Want to make a motion on that one?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Shall we support it or do not support it?
I support it.
Okay, just a separate clarification. You left that part off. This, Josh, seconded it, Ron. Okay, all those in favor?
I, I just had a comment. Did you want to explain that a little more? That, the title of that isn't exactly clear. You want to just read a little bit into that or paraphrase it?
Sure.
Summarize it?
Regional school committees of the Commonwealth are tasked with producing financially sound budgets designed to meet the needs of all their students, just like public school committees in Massachusetts. And whereas municipalities of regional schools are presented with regional assessments which can fluctuate dramatically based on the enrollment, present changes, and can be fully, and further exacerbated by unbalanced adjustments of the equalized valuation of property. A key metric in the state formula used to calculate the minimum required local contribution. And whereas in 2016 of the Massachusetts, of the state Mass, the state of Massachusetts passed Municipal Modernization Acts, which aim to grant more local control and encourage financial efficiencies where, where possible. The precedent exists from statute to support the creation of a regional school assessment fund, uh, assessment reserve fund, which could be used to offset abnormally large increases to a municipality's regional assessment. Therefore, be it to, be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls upon the Massachusetts Legislature to enact or amend legislation which permits municipalities to establish a regional school assessment reserve fund. I'm not going to read the proposed language unless somebody wants me to. Yeah, that's good. Bring it back to elementary school all over again.
The thing of it is, all of this is almost in a state of suspended animation because with the amount of money that's at the state right now, the excess amount, uh, the regional school assessment reserve fund, they really don't know what's going to happen. They're going to get more money, less money, or they're going to be sent out in e- in equitable form. According to my, my colleague, we call equity, 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 equity. You almost hear like a mandarin in your sleep, equity for all the schools, whether they're regional or, or, uh, let's see the other one. Regional and, uh, non-regional, urban, regional and urban.
Individual districts, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it'll ever be equitable. They'll try, but you know, go ahead.
So I think, did we?
Did we vote?
Did anybody make a question? Did somebody second it? Who seconded it?
I have a question, just Dean.
Well, he was first and Josh was second.
I have a question.
Josh.
Who's first?
So the superintendent might be able to ask, answer this. Do we get the same amount per student at R C T E I as the regional school systems, you know, vocational school?
No.
No, we get less.
Correct.
Yeah. So.
But this isn't just talking about vocational schools? Yeah, I just wanted to.
I just wanted to make sure, I just wanted to make sure that, because I didn't hear that mentioned in there that the, there'd be equity in, uh, you know, vocational schools. So I, I'd ask that, we ask for an amendment to that because Ron, you know as well as I can, you can ask for an amendment that vocational.
It's like, it's like making baloney, you know?
I know, but there's nobody better than you.
No, I think that's hot dogs. You know, you don't want to see how it's made.
There's nobody better to try to make, to fight for an amendment than Ron.
That's a really good idea, Dean, because we should get equitable funding for our vocational program. I think that's a wonderful idea.
I take my second to support, um, the best justice amendment. Yeah.
So I'll present an amendment there. I'll tell them.
Yeah. I'll write it up for you and send it.
Thank you. So the, the motion and the second was to support the amended resolution.
Yes.
That Ron's going to draft.
Bring up, bring up.
Dean's going to draft it. I'll draft it, but he's our rep, so he'll stand.
Okay, bring in, make the sausage over there.
We're right behind you, Ron.
All right, so all those in favor?
I just, I need clarification. We're voting on, we're voting on an amendment that hasn't been drafted yet? I'm confused.
Voting to suggest an amendment.
To include.
Yeah, we voted an amendment at, at the, at, at the meeting because they all, they always, they always have these people standing up to make an amendment, uh, to an amendment, to amendment, how it's written, whether it's semantical sound, this and that.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. I just want to know what I'm voting for.
Yep.
So we're, we're not, we can support it if, right, if the amendment does not occur, is that basically?
We want equity, 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 in big letters.
Make sure include that.
Can you just present the motion again?
I'll write it up.
Okay.
I made the, oh, go ahead.
Ronnie, can you?
Can you just present the most, the motion again, please?
So it's the establishment of a regional school assessment reserve fund and to advocate for equitable funding for vocational schools so that we would have equitable funding compared to our regional counterparts.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm sure.
Josh second.
Oh, yes.
Before we start.
I'll be a yes.
I can't remember the numbers that, uh, the superintendent gave us. What did you say was the percentage?
What?
Of how much compared to?
Compared to the.
So I didn't say that, but I, I'll get you the exact number so you can see.
You don't have to give it to me, you put it to her so she can tell.
Right, I'll give it to you.
Let's vote on this and then we can talk about that. All right, all those in favor?
And.
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Resolution Six is supported with the amendment. Okay.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the following warrants. From the general account, warrant six that totals $726,342.96. Warrant seven that totals $243,193.17. Warrant eight totaling $2,550,277.23. Warrant nine totaling $373,043.78. Warrant ten totaling $2,606,200, uh, sorry. Warrant ten totaling two million, six hundred and six thousand, two hundred, sorry, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty-six cents. Warrant eleven that totals one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty-three cents. And warrant twelve totaling two million, six hundred and one thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty-five cents. And the grants revolving warrant six totaling one hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty-seven cents. Warrants seven totaling eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and fifty-four cents. Warrant eight totaling three hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty-eight cents. Warrant nine totaling one hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents. Warrant ten that totals two hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and five cents. Warrant eleven totaling thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty-one cents. And warrant twelve totaling three hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-nine, sixty-seven cents. Sorry, I'm trying to spend two extra pennies.
Read that better than I read.
Pretends my eyes.
I'll second it.
We've got a second. All right. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Dean's a yes, Greg's a yes. All right. New and old business.
Yeah, these are just information reports, our monthly reports from HR, our enrollment report, October one numbers, we will be still looking at this month. Our numbers are up from last year, which is great news. And the mental health resource is going to be out as you enter the new season package. So please share what I'm doing too.
And that will also be posted when I
Yes, we're going to post it. We're using those all the time.
Let's ask one question on that, the enrollment report.
Yes.
Do we know how many of us families who withdrew children to homeschool during the pandemic returned?
This year or last?
Or whatever this is.
Oh, I think our number was seventeen-ish, but I can get you the exact number and I'll send that out.
Does that say parents seventeen-ish that have returned or?
Oh, no, that are still out on homeschool. But I'll give you the exact number.
Thank you.
Homeschool or private school? We don't know the difference.
Out of our school system, right?
I don't do that. Yeah, sorry. Yeah.
And I and I can I ask some some, you said number seventy that are
homeschoolers, which is typical.
Okay, and as compared to?
During the pandemic?
Yeah.
We were, we doubled that.
By twenty forty?
Yeah, around one forty. So students are retired.
But you indicated that seventy is about normal?
It's about typical for us. Yeah.
So we're we're kind of back to baseline. Yeah, that's awesome.
And our enrollment numbers are pre-pandemic at this point as well. If not a little higher, which is great.
It's great to hear. Anybody else have anything under? Oh, go ahead, Melissa.
Two things. So first, I was here over the lead for open house and I heard from a number of staff about the camera system, the security system that's been installed. And I am appreciative that they're feeling so happy about the security system. So thank you all on that. And then we also all received a email from Rabbi Einholz this week regarding some conflicts in scheduling and how we can work together to make sure there's not conflicts in the future. So I want to have a plan on how we're going to do that, which also brings up the topic of the DEI staff person, and I was hoping we could get an update of where we are.
Sure. So we had the candidate. Yeah, we loved it. Members of this committee were on that team and she was stellar. Stellar. She really set the bar for us and we made her an offer and she left. She moved to Boston. So that's where that piece ended. But we are still actively seeking that position. It's it's vital for us. It really is.
But it's also very important to get a very good candidate. And everybody else that applied was not someone that we would entertain in this person's place. I mean, she was just amazing and we need to find somebody else who's amazing.
Absolutely.
The team brought a candidate who to me, not a second running out to make out strong about that.
I only ask because I think there was a second posting of the position and I'm assuming we didn't get the feedback we're hoping for.
Right. In regards to the rabbi email, I think it's probably not a bad idea to get maybe other culture, religion stuff.
Yeah, that's why I was
Good to see what any other conflict would arise, especially as we get more diverse in the town. There's going to be other things out there that we might not be aware of.
Yeah, go ahead. Speaking of which, I wasn't going to mention this, but now that it's in conversation, Sukkot is actually Wednesday. And I'm Jewish and I'm going to be out that day. I'm out every year for that pass that day. So kind of a thing where you're not supposed to really do any work. And that's been a little difficult with my scheduling. I'm not, it's not like any of my teachers.
Do you have a pass? You do the pass? I can sign it.
No, so like everyone's been like as understanding as they can the way that it's structured, I guess. But that kind of lies the issue, I think, is like you know, like my teachers have all been very commensurate with like, you know, when I can get work to them and how to get work to them. But the fact is, is I'm missing time in class. And I'm not asking for the day off because I know there's there's very few Jews in this school. And that would be just both unrealistic and unfair to to do that. But I would like to maybe discuss or just see what you guys would think about other ideas, other things we could do to maybe make things like that. Because I I I'm a little, before I came here, I was stressed out a little bit, you know, and my teachers figuring stuff out. So it's kind of fresh on my mind. I I I would, there are other Jewish teens in the school. I know several. So I I I just want to, I'd like to maybe just brainstorm if you guys have any. And maybe or maybe I could be pushed for business in another meeting. I don't know, but
I think it's a good conversation to bring up as an advocate with your local principal. Because there is a lot of flexibility. And I think it is, I think it's based in a conversation and just informing people because right now, people are moving a hundred miles an hour just trying to get things done. And it's not to diminish anything. It's just probably not in the forefront. But I think, especially up here, the teens talk, I feel like the adults listen. So I actually think that that would be a great conversation to have with admin up here and probably put that on some building-based meeting and then we could build it out from there.
Okay.
Especially now that you have this culture team that's starting up here as well. That might be a help. That might be a nice advocacy group. We have started as well.
Matt, I don't I don't think you got the email from the rabbi. She was just kind of bringing those concerns to light. So, you know, I think we can review it and see. Those things will definitely be on our radar as well. We appreciate receiving. I appreciate receiving those.
It's like, I know it's unrealistic to like say like, there's anything we
There's always something, something we can do.
I just thought it's something we should all think about.
Yeah, absolutely. Perfect.
Ron and Brandon. Although there was a there was a there was a kerfuffle about a year ago where we're scheduling something on a particular day. I don't know if anyone of y'all remember.
It was an open house. Yes, an open house, yeah.
And I did pass the message on to the chair to, you know, talk to someone and tell us what we needed to do. I didn't hear anything from him and it all of a sudden just disappeared. But all of a sudden, this thing popped up again. And I think unless we address it, but Sal, my colleague said, we are a, we are, we, we, we are a diverse community. There are Jewish, there's Christian, there's Muslim.
There's, there's a lot.
We, you know, diversity begins with capital D and capital Y. And we have to encult- diversity culture. We have to be able to acknowledge all of that. And we sometimes have to be like the superintendent said, we have to be flexible. And I think what happened was that red, the rabbi read Paul's email. She just, you know, she said, what happened? All right. And so go ahead, I'm I'm done. I
Go ahead, Brandon. Go ahead.
No, I just want to piggyback on what Sal said. But first, Rabbi Einholz is in the room and I just want to acknowledge her and and thank her for the message because I I really
Didn't say she was coming.
It does take a community and, you know, I don't expect anybody at this table to know everything. You know, so I appreciate her reaching out to us to put it on our radar so that we can get better in the future. And and, you know, I really think it takes bringing everybody in that we can to make sure that we don't. You know, the bigger issue for me was I I would hate for kids to miss out on a great educational opportunity like nature's classroom just because of a scheduling mishap that we could totally easily avoid.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah, most.
That's why I, I personally agree.
Agreed.
I hundred percent agree. But also, you know, I'm so happy Matt is here and can advocate, but I think I also just want to make sure we're communicating it, not just at the high school because it is really hard for littles and the elementary school and the middle school to be able to advocate for themselves. And so well, it's a great learning experience for Matt to be able to advocate for his community and friends. I also want to make sure that those kids who don't have an advocate for them necessarily aren't being
Right. And I would really hope the younger students to begin with. Right, right. Six times. And we certainly want everybody to have an opportunity to, you know, attend and not have to be making those choices.
Always.
So we do appreciate.
I liked what Josh, you sent out because it it's not just the holiday, right? It's understanding what does it mean to the children and and the people that work in our building and and how does that impact their day-to-day face? Right? They're not supposed to work. Like, okay, you know, we have to be mindful of that, too. It's not just the holiday. It's what does it mean for scheduling and their teachers and their day-to-day? So.
That was a nice document.
Yeah, thank you. Workforce development. Okay.
Great.
Anybody else have any comments on that or have any additional new rules they'd like to ask?
This is Dean. I have just a couple of things. One is thank you to the rabbi. That was excellent. She gave us a whole breakdown of everything. And now, you know, I I mean, every year, as you know, I always, you know, we always ask at the beginning of the season before we schedule, put a calendar together before we approve it. But again, Chris can't know everything. I mean, there are just so many things. It's impossible. So you know, with we have, we're so diverse with so much in the way of religious diversity that it's impossible for Chris to know everything. So those, the rabbi taking the time to send that to us is very helpful. And as Greg said, understanding each of the each of the days and their significance is something that's educational and should be to everybody. I love, this is, I, that's the part I love about this city. And I can't claim that I don't like the festivities as well as the food, too, because that's, that plays a critical role to me as well. But understanding it all is really interesting. And I think kids like to hear this about other cultures and how they and and religious beliefs and how they celebrate and what they believe. You know, that's make, that that's what makes us who we are. Secondly, it's it's mental illness awareness week. And we we had a candlelight vigil last night, so I thank those that could make it last night for coming. And the third thing is, I'm a little bit concerned about this question one, which is the millionaire's tax and the money, you know, all this money that's supposed to be coming to the cities and towns for education. And what I didn't read, and I might, I might have misread it or I didn't understand it totally. But there's nothing in there that says that the legislature cannot reduce the regular budget. So if they decide, now I could be wrong, and maybe this is where the Mass Association of School Committees could, you know, speak to. But if if, let's just say that new revenue is supposed to bring us an extra three million dollars. There is nothing that prohibits the legislature from reducing our budget by two mil- two million dollars. There is nothing in there. It says that all of this new money from the millionaire's tax will come, you know, will go to schools and roads and bridges and, you know, you've all seen the commercials. Well, as much as I've been able to read into it, there is nothing that stops. So it doesn't say additional money. There's nothing in the legislation that I see. And I could be wrong, and I want to make sure we're correct on that. And maybe Ron, while you're down there, you know, we can get some clarification because this has been done in the past where, you know, there are additional funds that come in for the tobacco control, you know, for the tobacco taxes. And it was supposed to be used for certain, you know, specific uses. But then it was for shut time. And we have one tobacco control person for the entire area now. It used to be a team of people. So a lot of the funds that were were was once available for education and we're talking about vaping now, right? And and, you know, the money that used to be allotted for tobacco awareness and and some of these other areas is not there anymore. Yet, we were told that that's exactly the tax on cigarettes and other products. It's exactly what it was going to be used for. So I think what you just all understand, nothing prohibits them from cutting the budget.
But I think we're getting into a state referendum vote and not a school committee MASC vote. So I don't think we should be talking about or questioning something that's going before the voters myself in a couple of weeks. That's for voters to look into. And then whatever that decision is, then as school committee members, we need to see what the impact is.
Oh, I I totally disagree. I think we have a responsibility to let people know if if there is nothing specific in there that addresses, you know, this is additional funding, then then they're free to tax people and then later on not not fund this at the level they were funding us at and say, believe me, you're getting the same amount of money or more. I think it is something which needs to be discussed. Before the, I think the voters are under the impression that if they pass this, this is additional funds in addition to what we already get. But I don't see a provision in there that says anything different than that. That's not, that's not what I read into it. So year one, we could take in
The only thing, Dean, you have to remember, if you do read, if you do listen to the ads and you look at the Constitution of Massachusetts, funding for for good education is constitutionally, this, it's a, it's in the Massachusetts Constitution. What has never been delineated is how much money is supposed to go to all the schools.
Ron, Ron, do you remember the tobacco tax? Ron, do you remember the tobacco tax?
I know.
Do you remember what it was supposed to be used for?
I know. I heard all the stories back and forth.
Exactly.
What I'm telling, what I'm telling you.
All I'm saying is, we should be very clear on this. And we should be honest with people as to whether, you know, does anything stop them from cutting the budget later on from what they're already giving us? Because now we're picking up money from there. There's nothing that I read in there that says you can, that this is additional money. It says it's it's funding that will go towards schools and education. Doesn't say additional on top of what we're already getting. Nothing stops them from cutting the budget.
So I think it's important for all taxpayers and all registered voters to read the pros and cons of all of the referendums, amendments, or whatever that's in before us when we go to vote.
Exactly.
And everyone needs to take a look and and vote, be knowledgeable and informed. So at this point, I make a motion.
Go ahead. Just a follow-up with your athletic report and Mr. Sassen. Should we add a formal athletic field presentation to see where we are?
I would be in favor of that. Can you give us some time just because the D is all right to
I just want to get, make sure we get that on with the next couple of meetings, especially now that we commented last time, you and the public comment.
Let him do some, a little more of his background.
Okay. Anybody have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Greg, Dean?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Adjourn. This is number one.